We're on TV, so what time is it?
Pardon?
I said we're on TV.
Anytime you are there. He's a minute early, though. That ain't happening. Thank you. Good, Jeff, how are you? Yeah, thank you. Freddie, anytime you are. Something to do while you're sitting there.
I'm going to call the City Council Caucus meeting to order for August 24th, 2015. We have two public hearings tonight. If the clerk would read each of those.
Public hearing number one regarding designating the Woodlawn Preserve as a park. Public hearing number two regarding amending Chapter 138 to waive the building permit fee in certain circumstances.
And then we'll move on to the regular agenda for final consideration. Item number one.
Number one for final consideration and ordinance amending Chapter 36 of the Administrative Code of the City of Schenectady Elections.
Without objection on consent. Item number two.
Item number two, an ordinance amending Chapter 248 of the Administrative Code of the City of Schenectady regarding parking ticket payment recovery.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number three.
Item number three, under original consideration, an ordinance amending Chapter 151, excavations, Chapter 228 Streets and Sidewalks, introduced only with a resolution calling for a public hearing on the above proposed ordinance for 7:00 PM on Tuesday, September 14th, 2015.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number four.
Item number four, a resolution authorizing supplemental agreement number one with New York State Department of Transportation for design services in connection with the Oak Street Bridge over CSX Bridge Repair, City of Schenectady PIN 1750.33.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number five.
Item number five, a resolution authorizing supplemental agreement number one with AECOM for preliminary and final design services in connection with Oak Street Bridge over CSX Bridge Repair, City of Schenectady PIN 1755.33.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number six.
Item number six, a resolution authorizing the issuance of revocable permit number 597 to Taj Mahal Restaurant for a sign and awning on the face of the building located at 142 Clinton Street, Schenectady, New York.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number seven.
Item number seven, a resolution accepting the transfer of ownership, a portion of 14 South Brandywine Avenue, 18 South Brandywine Avenue, and 1101 State Street to the City of Schenectady.
Discussed in committee without objection on consent. Item number eight.
Item number eight, a resolution authorizing the City of Schenectady to settle a property damage claim with Bruce Rejack.
Discussed in claims without objection on consent. Item number nine.
Item number nine, a resolution authorizing the City of Schenectady to settle a property damage claim with Amika ASO Rappaport.
Discussed in claims without objection on consent. Item number 10.
Item number 10, a resolution recognizing Buzz Media and the Miles of Smiles Committee.
This will be taken out of order. Ms. Parrazo will present that. Item number 11.
Item number 11, under contract and supply, a resolution to accept the bid and award, the contract, for the City of Schenectady Wastewater Treatment Plant Laboratory Roof Replacement to Midstate Industries LTD in the amount of $84,480.
Also discussed in committee without objection on consent. And then we have four other items that were discussed in city development and planning this evening. So item number 12.
Item number 12, under original consideration, a resolution authorizing the sale of 1013 McLei- McLeieman Street.
Without objection on consent. Item number 13.
Item number 13, a resolution authorizing the sale of 805-807 Mason Street.
Without objection on consent. Item number 14.
Item number 14, a resolution authorizing the sale of 1605 Foster Avenue.
Without objection on consent. And item number 15.
Item number 15, a resolution authorizing the sale of 909 Bridge Street.
Without objection on consent. There's nothing else to come before the City Council Caucus. I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Kosher, seconded by Mr. Ferrari, all in favor? Aye. All right. I will now call the City Council meeting to order from August 24th, 2015, and ask you to rise through the invocation by Reverend Arthur Butler from Full Liberty Fellowship.
We come bearing praise and sacrifice and thanksgiving. We invite your spirit into this chamber. We invite your spirit into each and every one of its members. We ask you to bless them as they continue to do the work of the people. We ask a special prayer for those impacted for the violence that has been taking root into the city. And we ask that you protect each and every one of us. We ask you to protect our and bless our mayor and council members as they do the work of the people. We invite you because you are all-knowing and you are all-giving. And we ask that you give us what we need tonight to do that work. We ask you to give us wisdom to carry it out. And we ask you to give us courage so that we can stand up when we need to stand up and stand strong as a community. We just thank you for who you are, and we ask these blessings and all the things we ask in your mighty name. Amen.
I'm going to ask Jeff Gronken from Buzz Media to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, if the clerk would call the roll.
Ms. Parrazo? Ms. Porterfield? Mr. Ferrari? Mr. Kosher? Mr. Riggi? Mr. Mutiverin is excused. Ms. King?
Present. Before we get into our out-of-order resolutions, we have an announcement about the Fourth Annual Community Health Fair. So I'd like to invite Corey Rowe to come up.
Good evening. I'm delighted to be here. My name is Corey Rowe. I'm a registered nurse. I work for the Health Promotion Department, MVP Healthcare, and I have the pleasure of working with the City of Schenectady and the employees to implement worksite wellness. So I'm thrilled to tell you about the Fourth Annual Community Health Fair hosted by the City of Schenectady. And I'll just ask that you can refer to the flyers. This event shapes up every year bigger and better. MVP is so proud to collaborate with the Safety and Wellness Committee and really underwrite some really great features for this year's fair. So what you can expect is that it's a free event for everyone. It'll take place on Saturday, September 12th. And as you all know, this is a destination time with many events going on at the same time. Excuse me. But we'll be bringing in wellness exhibitors, family-friendly events, music. This year, a new feature will be chalk art. We have the Schenectady Police Department will have a presence, the Schenectady Fire Department will have a presence, and you can count on another great effort from MVP. Lastly, I'd like to tell you that... Oh, I'm sorry, I'm blanking. The who, what, where, when, how. And I think that's it. Are there any other questions that you may have for me? Very good. Thank you so much.
Okay, thank you for coming down. All right, we have one out-of-order resolution, which is recognizing Miles of Smiles. Ms. Parrazo.
Okay, Smile Monster, this is your 15 minutes of fame right here. So I'm just so pleased, just from a personal standpoint. My colleagues, President King and Councilwoman Porterfield can attest to the fact that I was just so emotional that day because to see the streets lined with people showing pride for their community, a community that I love so very, very dearly. We had a services bus ride by, and all of the people inside waved their smiley faces. We had a UPS driver drive by us and wave his smiley face at us, and people were honking, and the whole street was lined. It was just, it was just a really amazing experience. So I'm proud to be able to offer this resolution. Madam President?
You have the floor.
Thank you. This is a resolution recognizing Buzz Media Solutions and the Miles of Smiles Committee. Whereas Habitat for Humanity of Schenectady County, an affiliate of Habitat for Humanity International, is a nonprofit organization that works with generous donors and hard-working volunteers to make a positive difference in the lives of working families. And whereas Habitat for Humanity and Buzz Media Solutions, a full-service marketing and communications agency whose headquarters are located right in the heart of downtown Schenectady, have affiliated the Miles of Smiles Campaign, a global initiative to spread smiles around the world. How do you feel about that? And whereas on August 12th, 2015, downtown Schenectady became home to the first Miles of Smiles initiative, stretching from MVP Headquarters on State Street to Schenectady County Community College on Washington Avenue. And whereas this was a combined effort to raise money for Habitat for Humanity of Schenectady County, but also a community event to promote the many positive happenings taking place in Schenectady. And whereas Mayor Gary McCarthy, members of the City Council and New York State Assembly, as well as hundreds of organizations and neighborhood residents, local business representatives, and educators from Union College and SCCC came out to State Street to show their support, now therefore be it resolved that the mayor, Gary R. McCarthy, and the City Council do hereby pause in their deliberations to congratulate Buzz Media Solutions and the hashtag Miles of Smiles Committee on a successful Miles of Smiles event, which not only benefited Habitat for Humanity, but also gave everyone in Schenectady another reason to smile. I'd like to move this, Madam President?
Seconded by Ms. Porterfield, all in favor? Aye. Congratulations.
Well, I'd just like to thank you all very much. It's a wonderful recognition, and we had no idea what we were getting into when we started this thing, but it was truly a community effort, and I want to thank the committee and everybody who participated. Thank you very much.
Thank you for a very successful event. All right, we have two public hearings tonight. If the clerk would read the first one.
Public hearing number one regarding designating the Woodlawn Preserve as a park.
I have four people signed up to speak. The first is Lou Grasso.
Mayor McCarthy, members of the City Council. I'm a member of the Woodlawn Neighborhood Association, and we are also affiliated with the Woodlawn Preserve. We've kind of asked the city if they would consider naming that a park. If it becomes a park, we are eligible for some funding from other sources, plus we will then be eligible for anything that the parks are designated for in the city. So we're looking forward to that designation, and hopefully we can receive that from you fellows. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Looks like Dale Bernard?
Hello. My name is David Burrard.
David, sorry.
Hello, Madam President, City Council members, and Mayor McCarthy. My name is David Burrard. I live in the Woodlawn area and have resided there for at least the last 30 years. I also work in the Woodlawn Preserve for the last five years. The Woodlawn Preserve, as I'm sure you've been made aware, is 135 acres of open pine barren area. We have a retention pond, we have fish, we have animals, we have everything else. We are looking to have this area designated as a park within the City of Schenectady to try and cut down on the opportunities for outside entities from building or developing anything in the area itself. I understand there, last I knew, there were still a number of paper streets in there that were set up at some time in the past when you wanted or somebody desired to put developments into there. At this time, I know of no developments. I believe you are looking to consolidate this area into a full-nature preserve and/or redesignate it as a parkland, and I'm here just to turn around and voice my feelings that I would like, I would like to see this as a park within the City of Schenectady with all of the amenities that go along with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Jason Plank?
Jason Plank, Madam President, City Council, Mayor. As a Woodlawn resident for the last 15 years, supporting this resolution to make it a Woodlawn Preserve, and also too, should be helping to save the blue carner butterflies, endangered species, and this is the only habitat for the northern area for this piece. There's also some other wildlife critters that are in the area that is only added to it. You can learn more about it on New Corner Road, there's what's called the Pine Bush Museum, and it's free and it's open up, and they even got accessible trails at this visitor center, and you can learn a little more about the pine bush. This would just add to what Albany's already doing, and this would stop any future development. Thanks.
Thank you. Pete DeVores?
I'm Pete DeVores, and I live in the city. I've been to the Woodlawn Preserve for the cleanup that was done a couple of years ago, and it was the first of its kind, and Mr. Thorne and Chad Putnam were there and led this. We had scuba divers go in and the haul of stuff that was brought out of that lake, it was amazing, bathtubs, refrigerators, and everything. But you know, at the meeting the other evening, Chairman King mentioned that there were a lot of issues about this that she was very concerned about, but the conversation stopped there. And I think it would have been a better waste of our time if you had spent some time before this meeting to talk, have a conversation about this, because there are some serious issues about people that go into the area, and particularly where the Jersey barriers supposedly separate the preserve from the railroad track, and that they, people are going in there with recreation vehicles, and these barriers are not close enough together to keep them from possibly playing games with trying to be faster than the train. And so there are issues. I remember the first thing that I came upon when I was out there was what looked strange to me, and fortunately I had on some rubber gloves, and what I picked up was really bad, and it was very fresh. And so I think there are issues, and a discussion would have been in order for the concern for the city and its liabilities. And, well, that's what I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up to speak to this public hearing, so I'm going to declare this public hearing closed. We will move to public hearing number two.
Public hearing number two regarding amending Chapter 138 to waive the building permit fee in certain circumstances.
I have one person signed up, and that's Pete DeVores.
I really don't, can't get a grip on what the, who would be eligible for the waivers, but even if they were, I think it ought to be brought before the council and the public that there were, that there is construction of whatever the nature is, and that the fee is being waived. I remember many years ago when the Proctor was getting involved in productions of films, they used to come before the council and ask permission to work the streets, naming the streets, naming the hours, and providing the council with information about what they're going to do to protect public safety and the safety of the production people involved. And so again, I think awareness and transparency are always necessary. And the building permits, somebody really needs to upgrade the information to make sure... When they print these forms, they print them and ask for pieces of information because it's important. If it was important when they made the form, it's just as important six months, a year after, down the line. And people are obfuscating some of this information. Across the street, there was a building permit put up. There's no name as to who is doing the work, there's no amount. It does state the building address and the type of work being done, but all the lines should be filled in and at a level, posted at a level where they can be read by the public. That is part of the rules. Thank you.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up to speak, so I'm going to declare that public hearing closed. We'll move to the approval of the minutes from August 10th. Okay, Ms. Parrazo moves it, seconded by Mr. Riggi, all in favor? Aye. Communications and petitions.
Communications presented to the City Council for Monday, August 24th, 2015. From the mayor, a list of appointments dated August 24th, 2015. A letter from the city engineer, Christopher Wallen, recommending the award of City of Schenectady Wastewater Treatment Plant Laboratory Roof Replacement to Midstate Industries LTD. Under general, there are none; under petitions, there are none.
Thank you. Do we have any committee reports? Ms. Parrazo.
Just because the agenda is a little generic, for those that might be watching at home with regard to the waiver of the building permit fees, this would be in circumstances where damage is done specifically by the city or due to something that belongs to the city. For instance, a tree falling from city property and damaging someone's property, and so they want to rebuild, and we would then waive the building permit fee. So it's, although the agenda is very specific, the circumstance in which the fees would be waived is specific. I said specific before, I meant generic. I think everybody gets it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other committee reports? Ms. Porterfield?
Thank you, Madam President. I just have a couple of announcements. First of all, this Saturday, August 29th, from 2:00 to 4:00 PM, there's going to be a back-to-school wild jamboree. It's going to be held in Jerry Burrell Park. And there'll be games, giveaways, face painting, and all kinds of activities for children and families, food. Everything is free. Again, it's 2:00 to 4:00 PM this Saturday in Jerry Burrell Park. And as we all know, it's almost time for back-to-school. I know the kids are really, really excited, their parents are more excited. And there's going to be a school, school supply giveaway. This is being sponsored by Citizen Action in collaboration with New York State United Teachers and the Schenectady Federation of Teachers. Right now, they're collecting supplies. There's various locations. There's a box right here in City Hall, in the main, in the road tonder where people can drop off things. Also, there's another donation site at the District Office of Assemblymen Angelo Santa Barber, which is at Center City, 433 State Street. Also, the main library downtown, and the Niskiun Library are also collecting donations. These supplies will be given out on, let's see, September 3rd at Jerry Burrell Park at 6:00 PM. Now, on July 30th, there was an event that Citizen Action gave, and they gave out certificates to people to get supplies, so people can bring those certificates. In addition to that, folks who didn't get certificates, Boys' Day Out is participating in this as well, and there will be supplies for students who, or families who didn't get a certificate. So again, the supply giveaway is on September 3rd at Jerry Burrell Park at 6:00 PM. If anyone has questions, they can contact Jamaica Miles, and her number is 496-0799. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, committee reports? All right, if not, then we will move on to privileges of the floor related to the legislative agenda. I have two people signed up. Mary McLean?
Good evening. My name is Mary McLean. I live in the city. Agenda item number one and three. Number one, an ordinance amending Chapter 36 of the Administration, Administrative Code of the City of Schenectady Elections. I want to go on record in opposition of amending Chapter 36 regarding Schenectady Elections. This amendment change smells fishy to me. Someone is up to no good with this one. You want the city clerk to run a special election if the Board of Elections refuses to do it. The city clerk is a politically appointed position. The best interest of Schenectady citizenry will not be served with this change. I say absolutely not. Amendment, item number three, amending Chapter 151, excavations, Chapter 228, Streets and Sidewalks. This change is like letting the fox watch the hen house. Granted, there needs to be follow-up to city projects that are done by outside contractors, and according to this amendment, the job will fall on the city engineer. But where are the checks and balances for the engineering department? The department isn't doing its part properly. The department isn't doing its part properly and doesn't include beautification as a goal for the final project. The code changes read that disturbance made to the city right away must repaired or restored back to original condition within 30 days. It also mentions such things as removing streets and connecting pipes, but never addresses the issue of cleanup for the site. You can go anywhere in this city where a project was done, and you will see symbols, numbers, letters, et cetera, painted on the ground and left there months after the job was finished. The engineering department does nothing about it. Beautification is not on their radar. Well, it should be. It should be a city proj, well, it should be. A city project should look better than it's complete, after it's been completed than it did before.
Ms. McLean, please summarize.
There needs to be more language added to the code before it passes. The engineering department needs to clean up what the contractors leave behind. Thank you.
Thank you. Petey Boris?
I don't know where the Oak Street Bridge is. I'm glad to see what Mr. Wallens is doing. And I'm, I'm thinking more in lines of what's happening with Rexford at the moment. But again, as I think Mark Townsend from time to time comes to remind us, they come and they go, just like Commissioner Stratton and the Erie Canal. The water comes and it goes. Well, it comes, it brings the people here, they make their money, and then they leave, and they take it with them. They take it home with them and spend it in their communities. I'm glad to see the work that Mr. Wallens is doing. He's really an excellent commissioner. I was surprised, though, when he ruled, he came to make a decision on this, number six, the revocable permit regarding Taj Mahal restaurant. These issues are usually safe at the planning committee. But I, I think it needs to come out of that committee. And I don't know that Mr. Wallens' department is big enough to handle it. They're so busy. But from time to time, I attend all of the, these meetings. And we went through a period of time where the chairman of the, of that planning committee only wanted signs that were flush to the building. She liked the look. It was very New England-ish kind of look. And many people were denied applications for signs because they were not willing to do that. And I can actually name a couple. But then as somebody started with the neon signs, and then all of a sudden, we were seeing what they call blade signs that come out from the building, and they're usually supported by one or two rods. And it amazed me because before the renovations were done on State Street, there were many pictures shown of Schenectady in the 50s. And it was just, you couldn't hardly see anything for signs. And they were all blade signs. And it was the look of the 50s. And to tack massive pieces of formica to the front of buildings. So right now today, I think Schenectady looks just a lot like it did back in those old pictures. But in one particular instance, I think we were all taken aback, was because NBT says, has a sign flush on the building and then came along with a blade.
Ms. Boris, please summarize.
In front of it, a blade sign. So, thank you.
Thank you. I have no one else signed up, so I'm going to declare this portion of the meeting closed. I'll entertain a motion to approve the legislative agenda. Mr. Riggi, seconded by Mr. Ferrari. All in favor? Aye. Okay. Then we will move to privilege of the floor regarding city business. Before we start that, I just want to read a statement. I just want to remind everyone that regarding privilege of the floor, speakers are requested to limit their comments to three minutes. Additionally, while we welcome everyone's input, regardless of the viewpoint being presented, we must be respectful of one another. Everyone must use appropriate language, and foul or abusive language will not be tolerated. Any speaker failing to follow these requirements is going to be asked to leave. Okay? So that said, I will now call on Jason Plank.
Madam President, City Councilman Mayor, the paper just put into another article regarding Metroplex. About a couple, about, almost about a month to six weeks ago, Metroplex reported by both papers that Ray Gillen had falsified the documents at Metroplex and the jobs numbers, filing the falsified numbers and quoting from the state comptroller, from the New York State Comptroller, in their reports. Again, this Friday, through the Gazette's, to the diligence of trying to get under the Freedom of the Foil of Information Act, was trying to get the actual jobs and the actual numbers. This city has an obligation under its Economic Development Committee to have a cost-benefit analysis done every year on all these pilots. It hasn't done it for the last 11 years that you guys have been in power. And for him to be quoted in the paper, well, I'm trying to get the num, I'm trying to get the numbers together. He's supposed to do this as of 1st of April, and he's supposed to bring a report back to the city council. We don't even have a cost-benefit analysis. We have, we have one of the largest, largest companies, the battery plant. We've lost, they said they were supposed to create over 600 jobs. They're down to around 200. And it's Gazette quoted 80 jobs. They're down to 80. So, don't know which one, but we'll take the 240. Just give the best thing. That's, that's less than 300 jobs that have been lost. We have the big, huge headquarters piece. They lost over 20%. That's over 80 jobs that they've lost, between 80 and 100. Now, we've heard that the big shining star over in Center City has lost almost nearly half of their jobs. Are you going to recoup the money back? The racist, no, the money was going to go, is for the developer. You know, and this was another piece, was in the audit, was is that the State Comptroller went after the, the Metroplex for giving the money to the developer, not to the actual business for the tax benefits. And then on top of it all, what a lot of people don't realize is that there is a covenant that was signed in Jan, in December of 2011 with the Alco site, in which, which Gillespie Group cannot sign any of the property over for the first five years. If he does, the $4 million, almost $4.7 million that he received under the Restore New York Grant, he's got to give that back. So, and this is until December, the 2016, is when, when this is done. Well, the casino's supposed to be built. So is this place going to be receiving tax credits under sales tax, construction tax, mortgage tax? What else is it going to receive? Because casino can't own the property. Hopefully, we can get some answers. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam President, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Bethel AMA Church on 540 Mumford will be having a breakfast on September 12th from 9:00 to 12:00. All is invited. Lots of food. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. My name's Brendan Alley, and I just wanted to invite you guys to do something. I wouldn't expect to be able to make decisions from your perspective about anything you do with your job. Even if you were to send me some information, I don't think that I would be adequately prepared to make a decision based on what you do here. There's a garden down next to Quest, and I spend a lot of time down there with the people. And it's a great opportunity for you guys to see what type of encouragement and inspiration just teaching young children to take care of something can do, and teaching them to work for something. And it could be seen as an opportunity, or it could be seen as a conflict because of what's going on with the land, and because it's currently not owned by Quest, and there's an issue going on back and forth. But I think more importantly, it could be seen as an opportunity for Schenectady to step up and show the community how much they care. And instead of people hearing, in the midst of trying to take pride of our community, people hearing that Schenectady is not for this community garden, which is feeding people and also giving young kids important life skills, they're hearing that Schenectady is trying to take it away. And I just think like, wow, what a great opportunity for you guys to say, you know what? We're going to step up, and we're going to show the community how much we care. And instead of allowing it to be a negative thing, take, take pride for it and take accountability for it and say, listen, we're going to bend the rules, and we're going to make this work for you guys because we do care. There are a lot of young kids down there. And I was blessed enough to be born in burnt hills on a farm. I never chose to be born in burnt hills on a farm. That same spirit we ushered in earlier, he, he blessed me. And my mom wasn't a crackhead. My parents taught me how to work for myself, and we need to teach these kids that. If we want to actually have an impact on the people that are growing up, we have to show them that we're for them and encourage them in that way. And there's a lot of empty lots. There are a lot of empty lots, but none of them have a garden growing, and none of them are giving away free food. And so I want to invite you just to come down and see it for yourself, just as I wouldn't expect to be able to make an educated decision on what's going on in your everyday life. Extend that same gratitude to us, and don't expect to be able to make a good decision based on that community garden without coming in just taking a look. And I know there's issues with, possibly with Judy, I don't know what it is, but for the sake of the kids, we can have a huge impact and work together on this. So that's what I wanted to say. Thank you. God bless you.
Thank you.
Earlier, you heard me speak of the laxity of the engineering department. Can anyone here give me a timeline? When the filth the city made on my street will be cleaned up? The situation is getting worse. No street should have been done the way my street was handled. The city should have worked with the neighbors and all the paving done at the same time. The issue involves seven houses. Why would the city want private contractors going back into the street to fix the shoulder after the new street was put down? What would happen to the new street? And how will that beautify anything? My street is the city's responsibility. It is a reflection on how you rule. Get the filth cleaned up for me, please. On another note, when will the weed problem be addressed? Every year. As soon as summer comes, the weeds follow. I went to Reverend Adams' viewing. From Capiello's to the church, I wrote down five code violations. The weeds growing on Broadway are high enough to choke a horse. The Skoll property is no better. Half the concrete sidewalk on McClellan Street is covered with weeds. How beautiful is that? After, and then there are the mayor's pet projects, demolishing houses. After the first house was demolished on Eastern Avenue, half the lawn was left with weeds. Recently, another house was torn down. The weeds were left. Weeds are growing around the fire hydrants in the city. The Jezebells left the weeds behind the bushes after the mayor ordered the diseased trees cut down on the City Hall lawn. No money to beautify the neighborhoods or keep the Hamilton Hill Community Center open for kids, but plenty of money for Pathfinder, union bonus, plugins, parks, bike paths, and so forth. People do not live in parks. I live on a street in a house that produces revenue, that pays your salaries, and medical coverage. Folks, your priorities are skewed. As long as this administration allows the weeds to grow three feet high all over the city, you aren't doing anything right. Thank you.
Thank you. The last person I have signed up is Petey Boris.
Well, we had an inspirational talk the last time we met here from a attorney from one of the high schools here. She spent about 10, 10 minutes giving us a real pep talk on being able to do anything we wanted to. And I'm thinking, I'd love to have four minutes, but, you know, it's not going to happen. But anyway, she took up our time. I still haven't had any responses to the FOIA's that I've made, the requests that I've made to have my, the vandalism investigated. The attorney, District Attorney's Office hasn't called me back. And it reminded me, I think the first thing that goes when you get a system of socialism is the FOIA process. Nobody gets information. It's, it's some kind of a mysterious conga line, and they don't want to explain it. And I think that happens around here. And, and people are just being hired, put in places, and there's no order. It's a real hodgepodge in a place that just loves class differentials. And it's, it's very annoying. It creates chaos. And I think the process before it became collegiality and academic, academic process, they were called alienists. And so it's, it's real annoyance. It interferes with quality of life around here, and it's, it's very destructive. There was something else I wanted to mention here, and I think it slipped my mind. But the, these, this vandalism around here is terrible. I, I remember now, I wanted to address this conversation that is brought up all the time about an economic disparity study. I wish Mr. Plank, I appreciate everything you said tonight, but there, this repeated talk about economic disparity study, I wish you'd provide one of your own and tell us how many people, there's a difference between handicapped and disabled, and there are degrees. How many people are actually willing to give up that check that they get every single week, month, year, whatever it is, to get on a job? Now, especially if it doesn't have any skill level. So, you know, Mr. Hoteling may be blind, but because we had a governor who was black and blind does not mean Mr. Hoteling needs to give up his check and try to be a legislator. And I, there are a lot of people out there. We don't hear from the people that run that department.
Okay, your time is up. Thank you. I have no one else signed up, so I'm going to declare this portion of the meeting closed, and we will move to privilege of the floor regarding city business. Mr. Kosher.
Thank you, Madam President. And, thanks if I may. This Wednesday, just a reminder, is our annual Woodlawn Neighbor Association picnic. It'll be held at the Woodlawn Park, which is right off of Kings Road. And we're starting, it's running from 5:30 till 7:30. And it's open to the public. And we'll have, for our seventh year, Running the River Band from Niskiun. So, it has a sand beach in the back, and we've got the volleyball net up there. And again, play some good volleyball, so bring your sneakers, Mr. Riggi, and the rest of us, and we'll pop a few volleyballs up there. So again, it's rain or shine, but the weather's looking great. So, again, this Wednesday at Woodlawn Park. I'm sure we've all noticed that all our pools are closed. We had a tremendous summer. It kind of went by very quickly. But the pools have just closed the past Sunday. And again, we just want to thank the boys and girls of Schenectady for their wonderful leadership, working with our lifeguards, working with our staff, from the land staff to the pool monitors, our park employees, especially Johnny, who works at the pavilion itself with our score summer camp. He's a great young man, and I've had him for the last three or four years. And of course, to Schenectady County Job Training Agency. This year, they hired nearly 400 kids throughout the county. They were given jobs, and we certainly appreciate everything they did. But again, the pools have officially closed. However, the free lunch program is still going on. That is running until next Friday, September 4th. There was a little article in today's paper, I believe it was, with Sicum. So we want to thank Sicum, and of course, the numerous volunteers. And I know some folks from our City Council volunteered a few days at the library. But all the summer lunch sites will still be open until Friday, September 4th. And I guess they're on goal to reach almost 70,000 lunches served this year. And it's up from, I believe, almost 60,000 plus last year. And good luck to all our students who are going to college and to school. We are now empty nesters. My youngest one, we just took to Soonas Uigo on Friday. And I know many of our folks here are leaving the area to go to colleges throughout. And of course, Schenectady Schools will be opening up Wednesday, September 9th, a little bit later this year, with Labor Day falling behind. So Wednesday, the 9th. And again, we will just remind everybody to be careful driving, observing the stop school buses with the buses' lights flashing, and of course, our walkers, very important as well. And again, Ms. Porterfield touched on it, but the school supplies, a very big issue with a lot of our kids. They've got a great program. Again, Jamaica Miles is heading it up. We do have some additional boxes throughout all our county buildings as well. The county building at 620 State Street, in addition to 797 Broadway, and our county offices on 106 Erie Boulevard. And all three boxes are completely filled. We've emptied them once already at the county building, so we're doing a great job. And Jamaica Miles, as we know, is a wonderful community advocate with the Citizens Action Group. I can't speak enough about her and what they've been doing. But I know she's on Facebook, so if you can't remember her phone numbers, just check her out on Facebook. But again, please support our kids with your donations. Of course, we have one right downstairs as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Prazo.
And I apologize, I think I didn't introduce this section properly. It's miscellaneous business of the council.
I was a little confused, but I just would like to commend the work that Mr. Wallen has done and the diligence, along with the work of the mayor, to get that Oak Street Bridge. It was great to see the Oak Street Bridge on the agenda tonight, and we're moving forward. As a resident of Bellevue, I know it's certainly a benefit to emergency services and the ability to get to Ferrari's restaurant. Both of those things, very, very important, right? So, we're happy that that is moving forward, or I'm happy that's moving forward. Also, I just want to say thank you to the Southern Christian Leadership Group that organized and brought the residents of Hamilton Hill and the city together on Saturday night to talk about some of the violence that's been occurring. It was a good start. Many intriguing and positive comments and suggestions came out, and I'm looking forward to continuing that momentum. But it was yeoman's work to get everyone together, and I think it's important that we keep talking and keep moving in a forward direction. So, thank you for all those efforts.
Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Riggi.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Tony Benome reminded me that the Little League World Series is going on right now. And the field that they play on is Lamedy Field. It opened in 1959. Just for a little history, Schenectady was the first team to play on that field when they opened it in 1959. They beat Canada in that game. So they were the first team to play on that field officially, so it's kind of neat. Again, the forum Saturday night, I thought, was very good. A lot of positive comments were made. But I think we have to certainly keep that dialogue going. But I think it's important that people realize, this isn't just a problem for that particular neighborhood. It's a problem for all of Schenectady. And all of Schenectady has to band together to fix this problem. We can't polarize neighborhoods and think that it's just their problem. It's not their problem, it's our problem. And I think we have to get all the neighborhoods involved, we have to get all the elected officials involved, we should get our church leaders involved to fix this. It's not something that happened overnight. I know the mayor brought that up, and he's absolutely right. I spent as much time in that neighborhood as I did in my own neighborhood of Bellevue. Our family business was there for 35 years, so I know that neighborhood very well, what it was and what's happened to it. Same in Mount Pleasant. But I think it's very important that the community band together to fix this problem because it can be fixed, but it's going to take a lot of thought and a lot of communication between different people. But I don't think that we should think that's just their problem. It's our problem, it's Schenectady. And I think it's very important that we work towards that. The farmer's market in Bellevue this Thursday from 4:00 to 7:00. It's going to go for another couple of weeks anyhow, we'll get the correct date, but that's going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam President. I was pleased a week ago, Sunday, to join Assemblymember Phil Steck, where he made a commitment of $1 million in state money to go into Central Park, which will enable us to do improvements and renovations at Music Haven, the A-Diamond, in the Central Park tennis courts in conjunction with the U.S. Tennis Association Junior Division and 15 Love. We also had Assembly Speaker Hasteek come in this past week, toured parts of downtown, went in Central Park, saw where we were looking to do those improvements, and that he was really wholeheartedly endorsing that and the importance of providing the recreational opportunities for youth in our community. We've, tonight, we've moved four more properties. That goes on top of the over 40 that we've sold before since mid-2013. That's produced over $2.5 million going back on the tax rolls. You know, it is a program that got started slow, but it is paying off in a big way, where we're bringing back individuals to the neighborhoods, we're creating homeownership opportunities in that we're restoring buildings that, we're converting back to homes. And that's done in conjunction with our ongoing demolition program, where we're docking down the worst of the worst houses in the city. And I appreciate the council's cooperation in that, the staff and the residents in the city, where things don't move quite as quick as we would like, but they are moving in a manner that, again, I think people are starting to see results and understand the significance of the coordinated efforts that we're trying to achieve here. And it was significant that Senator Schumer joined us also last week, talking about the Homes Program and some of the proposed cuts in Congress, where they'd take that program and cut it by 90 percent. That provides us with some money that is flexible. We work in a consortium with Schenectady Colony in the city of Troy, where none of the, any one of those individual communities would quite qualify for the money by working together. We've formed a partnership that allows us to draw down those home funds and deal with difficult situations and some unique situations that sometimes require a little bit of creative financing to make homeownership opportunity a reality. So that we, again, thank the senator for coming in, raising the awareness on that, and that we look for ways to lobby the congressional delegation and hopefully make sure that those funds are restored and continue into the future. Because they not only do things just for the city of Schenectady, but we work with Habitat for Humanity, Better Neighborhoods, Schenectady County Community Action Program, and the Community Land Trust, just in the city of Schenectady, are all partners in that, that, again, provide unique and different scenarios to individuals to create homeownership opportunities in our neighborhoods. And also, this past week, we were able to announce two new businesses coming into downtown Schenectady. Lottery Rewards will be at the Biz Lab on Lower State Street, and the Albany Distilling Company announced that it will invest over $750,000 on a building in Yates Street. I've been kidding them that, you know, the Albany Distilling Company might not be the best name for Schenectady, but we'll try and work with them to provide something that will ensure their success and longevity in the community. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you. Mr. Kosher mentioned the Sicum Summer Lunch Program, and I know a lot of us have volunteered there, and a lot of people in this community have volunteered there, and I want to thank all of them. But I promised Lena, who runs the center over at Yates Village, that I would say a particular thank you to all the site supervisors. She runs a really tight ship there, and it goes very, very smoothly, and I'm sure all the other site supervisors do the same thing. So, again, we want to thank you and everyone who's involved with that program. Also mentioning, Mr. Kosher mentioned his daughter starting college, but you didn't mention the fact that she's starting as a sophomore, but because she was able to take advantage of courses at SCCC before she graduated. So, just want to kind of mention that, so folks remember that this is an option for our high school students. And lastly, next Monday is the fifth Monday of the month, so we will not have committee meetings or council meetings. We get the night off, and we will reconvene back in September. So with that, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Mr. Kosher, seconded by Mr. Ferrari, all in favor? We are adjourned.